Hare Om. Hare Om, Namaste Children. Today we are going to celebrate Hanuman Jayanti that was yesterday actually. So we will give importance to Hanuman and as well as Rama. So let us start today's as usual with the usual prayers. Om. Vakratunta Mahakaya. Surya Kotti Samaprabha. Nirvignam Gurumedeva. Sarvakadyesu Sarvada. Sarasvatinam Astubhyam. Varadekamarupini. Vidyarambam Karishyami. Siddhirbhavatumisada. Gurur Brahma Gurur Vishnuhu. Gurur Devomaheshwara. Guru Saatchhat Paravrahama. Tasmayi Shiguravi Namaha. Now handing over to Hemma, today you will have the story first or Hemma is going to introduce whatever.
I will introduce, thank you, thank you Lakshmi Mummy. So hello all, so today we will have a story session but before that I am very happy to introduce a new member, a new student in our team and that is Ariv, Ariv K Rao. You will be very happy to hear that Ariv is in sixth standard and now itself he is in, and when environmental conservation is into that, he is doing a lot of environmental conservation. Ariv has planted more than 2000 trees in the last six months. And he has done so much for environment and protection of environment like distributing seeds, you know, joining no plastic campaigns, doing work for water conservation. And because of this, on January 31st 2025, that is this year, he was honoured by Bharat Yua Garav Puraskar. At the prestigious Bharatiya Sammiti Utshab in, it's a very great prestigious honour that he has got for a 10-year-old. So we are very proud to see you today, Ariv. Where was this, it's not clear, where did you get this award?
I got it in Bharat, I got it in Bharat Samskuti Utshab in Kalburgi.
Kalburgi, thank, very nice. So Ariv, I would like you to speak something about yourself, tell us something about you and what you do.
So as ma'am has introduced me, my name is Ariv Rao and today I am here to tell you about some stories about Hanuman and some facts as well.
Yeah.
So can I start?
Yes, sure, I just want a line about yourself from your own, from yourself, something about yourself and then you start the Hanuman story.
Okay, so my name is Ariv Rao, I am 10 years old and it's been six months from which I am in environmental protection, I have been invited by Amrabat Tiger Reserve, I have been invited to Pichpilani. For in Amrabat Tiger Reserve, I was invited for no plastic campaign and in Pichpilani I was invited to give a speech about water conservation.
Fantastic, I think we will give a big round of applause, you are an inspiration to all the old and young people present here today, Ariv. Yes, now you can continue with your presentation on Hanuman.
Okay, so today I am here to tell some, some stories on Hanuman and facts on Hanuman. So I am going to tell about the birth of Hanuman. Once upon a time, there lived a Apsara in heaven. Her name was Pushtikala. She was the Apsara of the Guru of Gods who was Brihaspati. One day, Pushtikala disobeyed order of Brihaspati. Enraged, Brihaspati cursed her that you will be born as a female monkey on earth. Pushtikala requested Brihaspati that please I will not do this again, please take back the curse. But Brihaspati was not enough to listen and he walked away. In fear, she ran to Lord Brahma. Lord Brahma heard her whole story and felt pity on her. And after that, she told that you will be born as a female monkey in earth but you will give birth to the 11th incarnation of Shiva who is Hanuman. So when, so when Anjana was born, she was born as a beautiful female monkey. Kastari, the strongest and the bravest monkey in the world was struck by her beauty and decided that they both will have a marriage. After marriage, the, in Anjana's dummy gave Hanuman. One day before Hanuman's birth, in a dream Bali was told that a monkey will be born who will be the strongest and the bravest of all, even stronger than Bali himself. He was, he was jealous, so he sent two guards of his team and told that kill Hanuman in the womb of Anjana only. So after they went, they shot Anjana's womb and that time Anjana was left unhurt and the arrows turned into gold earrings for Hanuman. So this is the story about Hanuman's birth and after one day Hanuman was born. So I am going to tell you about, tell you some facts about Hanuman. Hanuman was the 11th incarnation of Lord Shiva, it's also known as the 11th incarnation of Utram. Lord Hanuman was born in Anjunea Hills in Kishkita, in modern times it is known as Humpty. Hanuman was born in Treta Yuk to serve Vishnu's eight avatar which was Ram.
Very good, very good, very nice, very well presented. Thank you so much. So we will continue, yes, thank you so much for the story and it is a very good information you have given us about Anjunea as yesterday was Hanuman Jayanti. Now we carry on with the story time, Ariv, we usually have a story time at the end of the session. Today we are having it right in the beginning, okay? So you can also sit back and enjoy the story, right? So today, on the same theme of Sri Rama and Hanuman, I am going to be telling you the story about Paduka Pattabhi Shekam. You know what is Paduka, any one of you can tell me what is a Paduka?
Amma, this is Hasini.
Hasini?
Amma, the slippers where the saints and all used to wear.
Yeah, the wooden slippers or the different type slippers, not the leather slippers that we wear today, right? Yes, and what is Pattabhi Shekam?
The ceremony before being crowned as the king.
Yeah, ceremony for being crowned as a king is called Pattabhi Shekam. So we know that every king is crowned as a, as a ruler of the kingdom, everybody who is worthy of it gets crowned. And in Rama in our story, Pattabhi Shekam takes this twice. Before he was crowned because Rama was exiled for 14 years, his Paduka or his slippers that he wore were first crowned, they served as Lord Rama. So let us see the story of Paduka Pattabhi Shekam, coronation of Lord Rama's sandals. I was very lucky that last month when my mother had come to Chennai, I had seen a beautiful dance drama on this which was choreographed by, in Kalakshetra by Rukmini Arundel, you know, very great artist in Bharat Naathem. So when I saw that, I really started reading about it and I thought I should share about Paduka Pattabhi Shekam with your children also. So Paduka Pattabhi Shekam, you see the beautiful sandals of Rama ruled Ayodhya for 14 years when he was in exile, how did this happen? You all must be aware of the story that Rama was exiled to the forest for 14 years because Kaikai demanded that her son Bharata had to be the king of Ayodhya. Bharata at that time when Kaikai was demanding this from Dasharatha, he was not in Ayodhya. He had gone to a neighboring kingdom to one of his relation's house. When he came back and you know the, the kingdom was handed over to him in a platter, like directly, not being the eldest son, directly he got it, his mother said, come, my son, we will give you your kingdom and you start ruling Ayodhya. Any other young lad in his place would have been delighted to become the king, but not Bharata. Immediately he said, no, no, I will not, the rightful king of Ayodhya is Rama. I am his younger brother, I will not take this kingdom and he rebelled against his mother, okay? And he refused the throne and he went in search for Lord Rama who had already gone on the exile, okay? He travelled deep into the forest to bring Rama back and he said, I will not come back till I bring Rama back and make him the king. He had taken vow, he had promised. And Rama, when he met Bharata, he was very happy but he said, no, I have promised I will follow my father's word. You know, it's my dharma is to obey my father and my father told me to go on the exile, so I will not come back until 14 years are over. Now this was a Dharam Shankat, both of them were right in their own way, what to do? Now, Rama had taken a vow and Bharata had taken a vow, Bharata will not go into the throne, that was certain. So Bharata accepted Rama's vow but he did not want to rule Ayodhya. So what was the solution, the Paduka solution? He requested Rama for his sandals, he took the sandals and he bore to it, placed it on his head, took, said that these sandals are going to be your representative. I will just do the administration of this Ayodhya, I will look after, I will safeguard Ayodhya but I will not be the king. These sandals in place of Rama will be the representative of Rama. He placed them on a throne and he ruled just as a caretaker. You know, who, a person who has just been given for some time, he has been given the kingdom to look after. He lived very simply, Bharata did, because he was so sad that his brother was walking barefoot. He was wearing, you know, those very simple robes of a hermit and eating phal and you know, phal, kandamul, you know, berries from the forest and leaves from the forest, water from the rivers, not like a king, so he also vowed to live absolutely like a hermit for the 14 days in a nearby village in Nandagram. He stayed there, he ruled in Rama's name and just awaited his return, okay? These Padukas which are placed on the throne in this, in this area, Nandagram, they symbolized Rama's presence. They symbolized Bharata's selflessness, selflessness means absolutely not think about his going ahead and becoming a king, he sacrificed everything. And ideal brotherly love and ultimately dharma, everybody stood for the proper dharma, they are not stray away from the path of dharma. So return of Rama after 14 years, Rama returned to Ayodhya and Bharata joyfully returned back Ayodhya to the, to Rama, to his elder brother and the Padukas were respectfully returned to his feet and Rama was now crowned. So that was the Ramar Pattabhi Shekam which took place beautifully, many painters have depicted this, we all were not there but we can imagine how it would have been in the holy place where Rama was made the king, right? With all his brothers and also with his faithful loyal friend and companion Sri Hanuman, always over there with him, okay? So this was the Ramar Pattabhi Shekam story I wanted to tell you and the moral of the story is true leadership is selfless. You don't have to be a king to serve a country. You can serve a country being a citizen also, that is all we all should realise. Respecting dharma over personal desires, what is right has to be done, what I want may not be correct, okay? Devotion and love among brothers and we see that Bharata is one of the, one of the noblest characters in Rama. Now all characters are noble, Bharata also is one very noble soul because such an innocent pure brotherly love that he displayed and his love for his country also. So as usual, now we come to quiz time. Okay, why was, this for the smaller children, the younger ones, why was Lord Rama sent to the forest? Can you read the four options and give me the answer? You have to tell me your name.
My name is Ariv Rao.
You are?
Kaikai.
Ah, no.
Due to Kaikai's wish.
Due to Kaikai's wish. Okay, tell your name and then answer so we will know who is answering, right? What, this is for the smaller children, no, don't unmute, I'll, I'll read the question. Why did Bharata, what did Bharata do when he found out Rama was exiled, who will answer?
My brother wants to answer.
Yes, Vedant Junior?
I'm here to answer. Went to forest, bring him back.
Yeah, he went to the forest to bring him back, very good. Again, the younger ones continue, what did Rama give Bharata instead of returning? All can answer, what did he give?
Amma can I say? I am a sandals.
Correct, the sandals or Padukas, where did Bharata keep the Padukas? Younger children, these are the small babies, Grahit.
On the throne of Ayodhya.
Yes, in the forest, both answers are correct, in the throne of Ayodhya, very good, okay? Now for the bigger children, you have to tell your name and raise your hand. First question, why did Bharata refuse to become the king after Rama's exile? What did he do instead?
Sir, 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 then Virat, next question.
Bharata refused to become the king after Rama's exile. As he, as he was supposed to be the ruler but as his mother Kaikai used his, used his boon, used her boons to, used her boons against Rama, he, he went back to Rama and asked him and asked him to call him back to be the king.
Very good, he went, he ran through the forest to search for Rama, correct. Virat, how does the story of Paduka Pattabhi Shekam inspire us today?
Amma, it inspires us because Bharata was selfless and he had lot of respect for his older brother Rama.
Yes.
It is also really great to see that the fact that no matter how much Rama might have wanted to come back, he stood by his father's word, so it's just really inspiring.
Very nice, thank you so much, thank you all, that finishes our storytelling for today and I hand over to Samya. Samya ma'am.
Thank you ma'am, it was a beautiful story, we will hand it over to Lakshmi ma'am for the sloka first.
Yes, yes.
Yes, children, that was a beautiful story of Paduka Pattabhi Shekam. Now let us chant some slokas about Hanuman, being Hanuman's Jayanti. So initially small children, Grahit, you can repeat after me. Last week you could not recite, no, so today Grahit will start. Ready Grahit?
Yes, amma, amma one second.
Yes.
Amma is showing me some meeting alert.
You cannot see the board, display?
Amma, I could see.
Ah, then you can repeat, no, okay? Buddhirbalam.
Buddhirbalam.
Yasodairiam.
Yasodairiam.
Nirbhayatvam.
Nirmayatvam.
Arogata.
Arogata.
Ajadhyam.
Ajadhyam.
Vakpatutvamcha.
Vakpatutvamcha.
Hanumat.
Hanumat.
Smaranath Bhavet.
Smaranath Bhavet.
And more sloka, Manojavam.
Manojavam.
Maruta Tulleyvegam.
Maruta Tulleyvegam.
Jitendriyam.
Jitendriyam.
Budhimatam.
Amma, I know this sloka.
Okay, you can chant then.
Manojavam, Maruta Tulleyvegam, Jitendriyam, Budhimatam, Varishtram, Vatatmajam, Vanarayutamukhyam. Amma, if I forgot this sloka.
Vatatmajam, Vanarayutamukhyam.
Vatata, amma can you repeat it?
Vatatmajam.
Vatatmajam.
Vanarayutamukhyam.
Vataram, Yudavukhyam.
Sheeramadutam.
Sriramadutam.
Shirasanaamami.
Shirasanaamami.
Now one more child, who can repeat, same two slokas.
Amma?
Amma can I, Virat?
Amma can I, Samritam? Amma, this is.
Asking, last year is asking, Virat is asking.
Who can, who can chant of your own?
Amma.
Hasini can chant, okay, Hasini. Hasini, you can chant both the slokas?
Amma, I know Manojavam but I don't know this second one.
Amma, Kushii can do both.
Can I chant?
Kushii, Kushii can do both, okay? Kushii, Kushii, both, start. Buddhirbalam.
Buddhirbalam, Yasodairiam, Nirbhayatvam, Arogata, Ajadhyam, Vakpatutvamcha, Hanumat, Smaranath Bhavet.
Manojavam.
Manojavam, Maruta Tulleyvegam, Jitendriyam, Budhimatam, Varishtram, Vatatmajam, Vanarayutamukhyam, Sriramadutam, Sharanam. Prapadye.
Shirasanaamami.
Shirasanaamamamam.
Acha, it is given Sharanam Prapadye, okay, that's also correct only, okay, thank you Kushii, nice. And Virat, you can chant, which one of your own?
Amma, I think I can chant both.
Both, okay, then start.
Amma, which one should I start it?
Buddhirbalam.
Buddhirbalam, Yasodairiam, Nirbhavantam, Marogata, Ajadhyam, Vakpatutvamcha, Hanumat, Smaranath Bhavet. Manojavam, Maruta Tulleyvegam, Jitendriyam, Budhimatam, Varishtram, Vatatmajam, Vanarayutamukhyam. Amma, if I forgot the last two lines.
Vatatmajam, Vanarayutamukhyam.
Vatatmajam, Vanarayutamukhyam.
Sheeramadutam, Sharanam Prapadhye.
Sriramadutam, Sharanam Prapadhye.
Thank you Virat, Hasini.
Hello, yes ma'am.
Ah, start, which one you can?
Amma, I can do Manojavam.
Ah, start.
Manojavam, Maruta Tulleyvegam, Jitendriyam, Budhimatam, Varishtram, Vatatmajam, Vanarayutamukhyam, Sriramadutam, Shirasanaamami.
Very good, now one more your sloka. Buddhirbalam, Yasodairiam.
Buddhirbalam, Yasodairiam.
Nirbhayatvam, Arogata.
Nirbhayatvam, Arogata.
Ajadhyam, Vakpatutvamcha.
Ajadhyam.
Vakpatutvamcha.
Vakpatutvamcha.
Hanumat.
Hanumat.
Smaranath Bhavet.
Smaranath Bhavet.
Sai Nishanth?
Yes, amma.
Ah, you can chant of your own?
I can say, Yudhirbalam, Yasodairiam.
Ah, okay, start.
Buddhirbalam, Yasodairiam, Nirbhayatvam, Arogata, Ajadhyam, Vakpatutvamcha, Hanumat, Smaranath Bhavet.
Manojavam.
Manojavam.
Maruta Tulleyvegam.
Maruta Tulleyvegam.
Jitendriyam.
Jitendriyam.
Budhimatam, Varishtram.
Budhimatam, Varishtram.
Vatatmajam.
Vatatmajam.
Vanarayutamukhyam. Sheeramadutam, Sharanam Prapadhye.
Sheeramadutam, Sharanam Prapadhye.
Thank you and who else wants to chant of your own? Last year can?
Amma, my brother wanted to do ma'am.
Ah, okay, come on. Start.
Nirbhayatvam, Yasodairiam, Nirbhayatvam, Arogata, Ajadhyam, Vakpatutvamcha, Hanumat, Smaranath Bhavet.
Manojavam you know?
No, I don't.
Okay, okay, repeat. Manojavam.
Manojavam.
Maruta Tulleyvegam.
Maruta Tulleyvegam.
Jitendriyam.
Jitendriyam.
Budhimatam, Varishtram.
Budhimatam, Varishtram.
Vatatmajam.
Vatatmajam.
Vanarayutamukhyam.
Vanarayutamukhyam.
Sheeramadutam.
Sheeramadutam.
Sharanam Prapadhye.
Sharanam Prapadhye.
Thank you children, these two slokas are very important. When you chant about this and all the blessings from Hanuman you will get, okay? Thank you everybody, now over to Sudama.
Namaste children. Last week on Rama Naomi Day, we discussed how Lord Rama is known as Mariyada Purushotam. You remember how many qualities of Rama we discussed last week? How many great qualities?
Amma, sixteen.
Sixteen qualities, yes. Today, some children are going to present small episodes from Ramayana. After they finish, you have to find out which quality of Rama is conveyed through that episode, okay? After five, G Vaishnavi may be arriving late, let the other four do, she can do afterwards, okay? We start with Kushii.
Hare Om. Lord Rama is highly powerful, the first demon, the first demon killed by Rama was Tataka. Once sage Vishvamitra came to, once sage Vishvamitra came to king Dasharatha and requested to send his son Rama, Rama to protect the Yagnar from the cruel demons. Dasharatha was so reluctant, reluctant because Rama was so young that time, only sixteen years old. He was worried about sending this young boy Rama with Vishvamitra. Vishvamitra said that, he knew very well about the bravery of Rama. That time Vasushtha was the Rajaguru of that dynasty. He also asked Dasharatha to send Rama with him. Sage Vishvamitra taught Rama few mantras. That, when witches, when, when it is chanted, the chanter will not feel tired or will not get fever. By, like that, Rama killed demon Tataka. Later, later during the Vanahasa period, Shurpanaka told Kara and Dushana to fight with Rama. Kara sent 14,000 demons to, to fight with Rama. But they were all killed by Rama. Later even Kara and Dushana were killed by Rama. At the end, we all know how Rama killed Ravana. Thanevada.
Okay, now tell which quality of Rama is shown in whatever story Kushii narrated.
Amma, this is last, can I answer?
Yes, it's last year.
Yes, Kushii told about how brave Rama was.
Yes, even at a young age of sixteen, he could kill Tataka and later he killed Ravana also and many more demons. So this is actually in that quality, it's called Veeryavan, Rama is known as Veeryavan, it is bravery. Okay, the next will be by Vishruta.
Arrangements were being done for Sri Rama's formation ceremony. Suddenly, Queen Kaikai, instigated by mantra's evil prompts, demanded that Rama should be sent to exile for 14 years in a forest and Bharata should be replaced as king. She wanted this as a fulfillment for the two booms granted by Dasharatha long ago. When Dasharatha announced this to Rama with the. When Dasharatha announced this to Rama with a heavy heart, Rama accepted the decision with a smile. He, he was, he was calm and not at all angry at Queen Kalke. He wanted to go to the forest in order to uphold his father's commitments. He bowed down to mother Kalke and said that she would have told this to him directly, he would have obeyed her anyway. Rama never showed any displeasure.
Uh what is the quality now? You come to know from this.
Mama, can I say Samrita?
Yes, Samrita.
Yes, Samrita.
Mama, um. Mama accepting.
Accepting what?
Accepting what his father said.
Yes, that is obedience to his father.
Mama, is it duty?
Anybody else?
Virat?
Yes, Virat?
Um, I can't decide between two, uh it's either um duty man or it's like, um.
So you are, from those qualities you are relating, okay, good.
Yeah. Or it's dharmagnya, I can't really.
It's dharmagnya and gunavan also you can say, two qualities, gunavan. Because your embodiment of good qualities, in his place anybody would have shown displeasure, no? He didn't show even slightest displeasure. When his father told that he had to go to forest, that is gunavan. And for upholding dharma, he accepted it, so dharmagnya also, two qualities from those. Now next will be by Hasini.
Uh one second, Mama. Jattayu's sacrifice. Jattayu, a bird, vulture, was a very loyal friend and a great devotee of Lord Rama. It attempted to stop Ravana from abducting Seeta. But it was severely injured in the process. Lord Rama and Lakshmana found Jattayu mortally wounded. And he informed them of Seeta's abduction and the directions Ravana had taken her. Rama was deeply saddened by Jattayu's death. Moved by Jattayu's bravery and sacrifice, Rama performed his funeral rites with great respect like a son. Which symbolized deep bond between them. It is, and it is believed that Lord, uh that Lord Rama had granted Jattayu moksha. Thank you.
Okay, come on, which quality here?
Mama, may I say Vi Vaishnavi?
Yes, Vi Vaishnavi.
Mama, it may be the friendship between Rama and Jattayu.
Okay, friendship, anything else you can say, any other quality?
Can I tell?
Mama, Jattayu sacrificed.
Mama, Jattayu. Rama's angle we are asking, yes, Jattayu.
Kindness. Mama kindness.
Mama kindness.
Kindness. Gratitude also, no? Rama was so grateful. Why should he do funeral for Jattayu like a son? So that is krithagnya, that quality is represented here. Next will be by Sai.
Today, I'm gonna narrate an episode in the Ramayana. In the Ramayana, Vibhishna, who is the brother of Ravana, advised him to return Seeta back to Rama. But as Ravana denied, as Vibhishna was a righteous person, he decided to change sides and seek refugee in the Rama, within Rama, with four of his companions. After meeting Rama, Rama asked for the, other, Rama asked for the opinions from other leaders. Sugriwa says that we should not trust them as he was Ravana's companion and he might harm Rama in many ways. But Hanuman says that he follows dharma and disagrees with, and disagrees with Ra- Ravana's opinion and nephew. Hearing this, Rama says that he cannot leave his disciple or refugee. It is truly said by Rama that by just calling out Rama, we have become Rama, you, you have become Rama's. And he will take you with him and remove all of your fears and this was his vow.
Good, so come on, what can you say about it?
Mama, can you say that Vibhishna is Satyavakya?
Yes, but from Rama's angle you have to say, Vibhishna asked for surrender. Who was Vibhishna, Ravana's brother and Ravana was uh Rama's enemy, but he accepted him, so what quality?
Mama, is it forgiveness?
Mom, he was humble.
Mama, can I say Sai Nishanth?
Yes.
Mama, sharanagati.
Yes, sharanagati, he came for sharanagati, Rama, it is actually from those sixteen qualities, we can take it dritavirataha. Rama has taken your vow, whoever comes to him asking for sharanagati, he will accept him, whether he is enemy or anybody. Rama will always accept him, he will, whoever comes to him with surrender, sharanagati bava. So even to Vibhishna, Ravana's brother, he was ready to accept him, from Rama's angle, that is the one.
Mama, but sharanagati isn't one of those sixteen qualities.
So sharanagati is, it is from Vibhishna's side sharanagati, Rama is dritavirataha. He was, see, if you, if you decide that you will follow a particular quality, you will not go back on that, whatever may be the circumstance. That is, okay?
And Rama was extremely compassionate.
Compassionate also, you can say like this. G Vaishnavi, are you there? Are you able to join? Okay.
Can you hear?
Yes, Vaishnavi, go ahead.
Hari Om, today I will be narrating a story which took place after the battle. After Ravana's death, Rama, as an incarnation of Vibhishna, focused on restoring dharma and us. Indra was very pleased when the demon Ravana was killed. He was standing in front of Rama with his palms joined together and he asked, please tell us what service we can do for you now? Rama did not ask for any personal gifts. Rama had given instructions previously that any varanath who has been killed in the battle, their body should be kept the same. So Rama asked Indra to give back their lives of all dead varanathas, including those who were slaughtered by Rama. Indra also accepted and said, if the body was there, he could give back their lives. So Indra sprinkled amrita on all varanathas who lost their lives in the war and revived the dead varanathas. This event is mentioned in the Yudhaka of Madhya. Meekhi Ramayana, Hari Om.
Okay, what do you say now? He gave back life to all varanathas, that is what he asked Indra as a boon. After the war was over, so what can you say? Huh?
Mama, can you say this?
No.
Uh dharmagnya again because technically.
Yeah. Sorry, any, anything else?
Name, tell Vi Vaishnavi.
Yes.
Mama, is it the welfare of all beings?
Yes, welfare of others, that sarva bhuti eshu kita, that quality, caring for others. Why should he ask for that? The war was over, he could have just left it like that, he wanted the life should be brought back to all varanathas. That quality issues, all of you narrated very well, beautifully, thank you all. Now, Chinmai and Desika are going to sing a Hanuman Bhajan.
Uh Mama, can you give us two minutes?
Hmm, okay.
Do you want the script Chinmai and Desika?
Or will you sing in the end? Chinmai, Desika?
Let's.
Chinmai and Desika? Can you sing after the Sanskrit session?
Hmm. Mama, are you able to hear us?
Yes, yes.
Seeta Ram Hanumanta, Ram Seeta Hanumanta. Seeta Ram Hanumanta, Ram Seeta Hanumanta. Va- Vaanaravira Hanumanta, Vaayukumara Hanumanta. Anjaniputra Hanumanta, Atibalavanta Hanumanta. Sanjivaraya Hanumanta, Mahanbava Hanumanta. Hanumanta Jay Hanumanta. Atibalavanta Hanumanta, Hanumanta Jay Hanumanta. Atibalavanta Hanumanta, Hanumanta Jay Hanumanta. Atibalavanta Hanumanta. Seeta Ram Hanumanta, Ram Seeta Hanumanta.
Thank you. Now, uh let Uma ma'am do, if there is time in the end, I will continue with that Rama Bhajan which I started last week, just for five minutes. Okay, let Uma ma'am do the Sanskrit part. Afterwards, if there is time, just for five minutes, because last week I could not complete that Bhajan, Rama Bhajan, I will do that. Now over to Uma ma'am.
Hari Om children, Surya Samskritavadga Swagatam. Pata misamskritam nityam, vada misamskritam sadha, dhaya misamskritam samyak, vande samskritam aataram, vande samskritam aataram. Let us all learn simple Sanskrit in the beginning. Laguragu vaakyani samskritenavayam paschiyamaha vada maha. I will tell you simple and small Sanskrit in share. Okay? For example, we, uh that is idanin, day-to-day conversation, payam paschiyamaha. For example, while getting up in the morning, you please tell suprabhatam to your mother, father, you must tell suprabhatam to mother, father, brothers and sisters. In the afternoon, suba madhyanaaha. In the evening, suba shandhyaa. In the night, suba raatrihi. If you want, if you want to tell thanks, danyavadaha. If somebody will come to your house, no? So swagatam, you must tell swagatam. Okay, now we will see the screen. Yes, yes. Now, we will see the screen. Um bhavataha namakim. For male, you can use bhavataha. Yeah, for female, you can use bhavatyaha. Anybody? Children, who is ready to repeat?
Mama Hanya.
Vi Vaishnavi.
Mama Ananya.
Hanya agachitu.
Mama.
Mama nama, ba- Hanya?
Ah, yes, Mama.
Are you ready? Okay. Mama nama Uma.
Mama nama.
No, no, you don't tell. Mama nama Uma. Bhavatyaha namakim, bhavatyaha namakim, what is your name? For female.
Mama Mama Hanya.
Ah.
Mama Mama Hanya.
Hanya, very good. Hasini?
Agachitu. Adya, you had put your hand up?
Adya?
Yes, Mama.
Ah, yes. Mama nama Uma, bhavatyaha namakim?
Mama nama Abhirami.
Ah, Adya Abhirami.
Adya Abhirami.
Very good, uttam. Next, Hasini.
Mama.
Come on. Uh mama nama Uma, bhavatyaha namakim?
Mama nama Hasini.
Very good, uttam. Virat?
Yes, Mama.
Agachitu, Virat agachitu?
Agachitu.
Uh for male, you can use bhavataha. Mama nama Uma, bhavataha namakim?
Me.
Mama nama?
Mama nama Virataha.
Hmm, mama nama Virat, okay, very good, uttam. Next, uh who is the next male?
Ananya wanted to say.
Ananya, ah Anani. Agach.
Agachatu, Mama.
Uh mama nama Uma, bhavatyaha namakim?
Mama nama Ananya.
Very good, uttam, uttam. Next, who is ready, the male, Sai? Agachitu?
Agachitu, Mama.
Ah. Mama nama Uma, bhavataha namakim?
Mama nama Nishantaha.
Very good, uttam, uttam, very good. Next line. Bhavatyaha, shalayaha namakim? Bhavatyaha, shalayaha namakim? Who is female?
Samrita. Samrita raised her hand.
Samrita, ah Samrita. Uh what is your school name? Bhavatyaha, shalayaha namakim? Mama, shalayaha nama? Samrita?
I did public school.
Ah, ah, but now you, you, you can tell your school name, okay? Ma- bhavatyaha, shalayaha namakim? What is your school name? Mama, shalayaha nama? Samrita, vadatou?
Mama, mama, I shalay, shalay.
Shalayaha nama?
Shalayaha.
Mama?
Mama.
Very good.
I did public school.
Uh okay, very good, uttam, uttam.
Uttam, uttam.
Uh Hanya?
Yes, Mama.
Agach. Bhavatyaha, shalayaha namakim?
Bhavatyaha, ma- ma shalay.
Mama, mama.
Mama. Mama shalay Saraswadi vidyalaya.
No, one minute. Mama, shalayaha nama?
Mama, shalayaha nama? Saraswadi vidyalaya.
Saraswadi vidyalaya, uttam, uttam. Next. Bhavataha, varga sikshahasya namakim? Mama, bhavataha, varga sikshikayaaha. I am female, no? So who is the teacher for you? Okay, bhavataha, varga sikshikayaaha namakim? Apo, I need, what is that? Mama, varga sikshikayaaha nama Uma. Okay? Anybody can tell? Who is ready to tell?
Kushii.
Kushii, agachitu? Agachitu vadatou? Bhavataha, varga sikshikayaaha namakim? Mama? Kushii? Uh mama, varga sikshikayaaha nama?
Mama, varga sikshikaya nama?
With, varga, varga, vadatou?
Varga. Varga vad.
Sikshikayaaha nama?
Sikshikaya nama?
Uh Uma?
Mama.
Hmm, or Sudha, or Soumya? Soumya ma'am, Sudha ma'am, Lakshmi ma'am, okay? Very good. Next screen ma'am, Soumya, next.
Uh Hasini has raised her hand, others also raise your hands so that we can call one by one, okay?
Yes, yes. Next.
Can I share the next screen?
Ah, yes. Yes, this is correct, correct. Okay, now, now we will see that there are three lingams. Called pullingaha, strelingaha, napunsagalingaha. Pullingaha, male, strelingaha, female, napunsagalingaha, neuter gender. Pullingaha, what is that? Uh hmm, sakha, that is eshaaha. Pullingaha, eshaaha. Strelingaha, esha. Napunsagalingaha, e塔. Now we can see that pullingaha only, okay? Esha bawalakaha. Esha bawalakaha means that the person who is standing near to you. Esha means the person who is standing near to you, that is, that, that person is called esha bawalakaha. This boy is standing near to you. So we can call him esha bawalakaha. Next one, saha bawalakaha. He is standing away from you, you see, all children, you must watch that hand. Hand that, um, uh that is, um, upper, stand, no, uh, you see the hand. Okay, saha bawalakaha, he is standing away from you, so saha bawalakaha. Esha bawalakaha, he is near, he is standing near to me, so esha bawalakaha. Saha bawalakaha, he is standing away from me, far away from me, so saha bawalakaha. Next one, esha simhaha. Simhaha is very near to me, so esha simhaha. Next one, saha simhaha, it is very far away from me, so saha simhaha. Next one. Next one, vaanaraha. Esha vaanaraha. Vaanaraha means you know all, monkey. Esha vaanaraha, it is near to me. So esha vaanaraha. Saaha, vaanaraha. Saaha vaanaraha, it is far away from me. So saaha vaanaraha. Next one, esha gajaha. Esha gajaha, it is elephant. The gajaha is near to me, standing near to me. So esha gajaha. Next one, the gaja is, uh, away, far away from me, saha gajaha. Saaha gajaha. Anybody, uh, can repeat for, with me? Who is ready?
Amma, Hasini.
Hasini, agachutu. Agachutu. Yes, mama. Now, okay. Esha baalakaha.
Esha baalakaha.
Saaha baalakaha.
Saaha baalakaha.
Esha simhaha.
Esha simhaha.
Saaha simhaha.
Saaha simhaha.
Esha vaanaraha.
Esha vaanaraha.
Taaha vaanaraha.
Taaha vaanaraha.
Esha gajaha.
Esha gajaha.
Taaha gajaha.
Saaha gajaha.
Uttham, uttham. Kushi?
Thank you.
Amma, can I say graha?
Ah, graha. Agachutu, vadatun? Esha baalakaha.
Esha baalakaha.
Saaha baalakaha.
Saaha baalakaha.
Esha simhaha.
Esha simhaha.
Taaha simhaha.
Saaha simhaha.
Esha vaanaraha.
Esha vaanaraha.
Taaha vaanaraha.
Saaha vaanaraha.
Esha gajaha.
Esha gajara.
Saaha gajaha.
Saaha gajara.
Dhanyavada.
Dhanyavada.
Kushi can say?
Ah, Kushi, uh, time is there, ma'am?
Uh, we have two, three, two minutes more.
Okay, ma'am, okay. Next class, uh, Agni varge, uh, vada. Kushi. Dhanyavada.
Thank, thank you, thank you.
So now, just for five minutes, we will complete that Bhajan which we started last week. So, Nityka, Nikita and Ananya, all the three will sing today in order, okay? First, Nityka. Nityka, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Nityka?
I wasn't.
Ramambajo raghu ramambajo.
Ramambajo raghu ramambajo.
Ramambajo raghu ramambajo.
Ramambajo raghu ramambajo.
Raghu kula tilakam ramambajo.
Raghu kula tilakam ramambajo.
Ramambajo raghu ramambajo.
Ramambajo raghu ramambajo.
Now, Ananya.
Ramambajo raghu ramambajo.
Ramambajo raghu ramambajo.
Raghu kula tilakam ramambajo.
Raghu kula tilakam ramambajo.
Ramambajo raghu ramambajo.
Ramambajo raghu ramambajo.
Now, Nikita.
Dasharat nandana ramambajo.
Dasharat nandana ramambajo.
Dasharat nandana.
Dasharat nandana.
Ramambajo.
Ramambajo.
Dashamu kamardana ramambajo.
Dashamu kamardana ramambajo.
Ramambajo raghu ramambajo.
Ramambajo raghu ramambajo.
Ashi also can repeat now.
Ramambajo raghu ramambajo.
Ramambajo raghu ramambajo.
Raghu kula tilakam ramambajo.
Raghu kula tilakam ramambajo.
Dasharat nandana ramambajo.
Dasharat nandana ramambajo.
Dashamu kamardana ramambajo.
Repeat, Samusini.
Ramambajo raghu ramambajo.
Bajo raghu ramambajo.
One more can repeat. Who is ready? There is still time.
Ah, Hasini.
Amma, Ananya.
Amma Vaishnavi.
Kanna.
Hasini. Amma, may I?
This is G Vaishnavi.
Hanya, fast.
Ramambajo raghu ramambajo.
Ramambajo raghu ramambajo.
Hasini, next line.
Raghu kula tilakam ramambajo.
Raghu kula tilakam ramambajo.
Ramambajo raghu ramambajo.
Ramambajo raghu ramambajo.
Vaishnavi sisters.
Dasharat nandana ramambajo.
Dasharat nandana ramambajo.
Dashamu kamardana ramambajo.
So, wait, you will have to learn to carry this.
Ramambajo raghu ramambajo.
Ramambajo raghu ramambajo.
Okay, you stop here and put the audio in the group. You can practice. Now, I think we can do the closing prayers.
Over to Lakshmi ma'am.
So, we enjoyed all Ram Bhajan stories from Hanuman, Patabi Shekam, everything. Uh, I hope all of you must have enjoyed, okay? So learn all these Sotram and Bhajan and you can sing whenever you celebrate some puja or something, okay? So let us close today's session. Om asatoma sadgamaya, tamasorma jyotirgamaya. Mrittyorva amritam gamaya. Om shanti, shanti, shanti.
Hariyo, mama.